Well, welcome back to the Point of Order Podcast and Inside Look at California Politics and the State Legislature. I am your host, Assemblyman Josh Hoover, and very excited to be joined today by a new legislator, new member of the Assembly, Jeff Gonzalez, from the wonderful 36th Assembly District of Imperial Riverside San Bernardino Counties. Welcome to the program, Jeff.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Yeah, really appreciate you coming on. Excited to introduce you to everyone. And I think, just to get started, I think it's easiest if, just tell us a little bit about yourself and your background and kind of why you decided to come to this crazy place we call the Legislature.
Why would you come to Sacramento? Keep it under an hour. All right, I think we could do that.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah, I was in the Marine Corps for 21 years, served all over the world, four tours to combat, two to Iraq, two to Afghanistan. I was on embassy duty. I did a whole bunch of different things across the board when it came to my military life. I was in counterterrorism, so I had a chance to see all the garden spots of the world. And prior to retiring, about 10 of my Marines died by suicide, and I felt like I had to do something about that. So I became a pastor. My faith was what sustained me while I was in combat, so I knew that I had to do something. So that was the biggest piece of me becoming a pastor and small business owner, and then essentially coming to the Legislature. But why did I get here? That's the biggest piece, right?
What led you here?
Yeah, married 20 years. When I married my wife, she had three kids. Our oldest is 32 now. He's got cerebral palsy with spastic quadriplegia, which means he doesn't have the ability to use his hands, his legs. He eats through his stomach, he's nonverbal, and he's completely dependent on us. One of the biggest, I guess the straw that broke the camel's back, if you will, was my wife was on the phone, she's trying to get services. There's this thing known as a bath chair. It's kind of like a high chair with a seatbelt and a strap. She's trying to get him into the bath, and he's 32, so he's a little bit bigger. So we asked for an upgrade, an older, a model for an older kid, right, an older adult, and they denied it. The state denied it, and they said, "That's a luxury." My wife said, "Why is it a luxury?" He goes, "Well, you know, he doesn't need one." Eventually, through the months, we were approved for something else. So my wife called, and they said, "Well, what is it that we're approved for?" They said, "Well, we'll give you a commode." And my wife said, "A commode? A toilet?" They were like, "Yeah, but it's got wheels on it." So my wife's response was, "Have you ever taken a bath inside of your toilet?" They're like, "Well, no." Like, "Well, why would you ask my son to do the same?" And that was the straw that broke the camel's back of me saying, "Something is wrong. Why can't we get this piece of equipment?" And it just so happens that Californians, north, south, east, to west, they all are experiencing the same things, which tells me that the system is broken. So, you know, you mess with my son, you mess with me, so it's time for Dad to get into the fight, and here I am.
I love it. Yeah, I love it. Well, we're really glad to have you. I know it's been great. I think I had you as a seatmate for about one day.
Yes, one day, one day, and then you kicked me out.
I didn't do any of that, but yeah.
I blame you.
But it's just been awesome having you, having your perspective, having your background, and you know, just kind of the experience that you've brought to the table has been really awesome, and obviously in the Republican Caucus, but just in the Legislature as a whole. So, you know, it's been great getting to know you. Tell us a little bit about your district, I guess, because I will say, you know, obviously being up here, and I'm kind of in the Sacramento area, so I'm pretty far away from your district, but you've got a really fascinating district near the California border. Tell us a little bit about that.
Sure. It's one of the largest districts in California. It's the most southeastern district, so I have places like Calexico, which touches the international border with Mexicali. I have places like Blythe, Arizona, and Needles. I also have French Valley, which is in Temecula. I have portions of Riverside, Imperial, and San Bernardino County. The county is diverse, and what I mean by that, geographically, we have grapes and beautiful wine country to carrots in the middle of the desert, right, and dates, things like that. So it's the...
That's awesome.
Yeah. Imperial County is the ninth-largest agricultural county, but we have such a diverse community as well. If you look at the numbers, it's a high Latino district, but really, we have a touch of everybody that comes to visit, especially in what we know as the Palm Springs region of Coachella Valley. So it's diverse. It's got veterans, young, old, everything in between, and all the languages and food to go with it.
That's awesome. What are some of the biggest challenges you guys face down there? I mean, what are some of the things that you're hearing from your community?
Sure. Access to quality healthcare. So when you're in a rural district, you know, I tell the story about a woman going into labor in Calexico, will have to travel 30 to 45 minutes, pass up a hospital and clinics just to get to a center to be able to have her baby, or travel internationally across the border into Mexico. So that's one of the biggest challenges, is quality healthcare, access to quality healthcare. We have some amazing physicians, but we just don't have enough. Where we need 20 in one specialty, we'll have like five. So it's a huge, huge challenge. And obviously, the heat, agriculture, water rights, all those things in between make a difference when we are part of the breadbasket of the nation.
Yeah, that's awesome. So I gotta ask you, how is the job going for you so far? So, being in Sacramento, being in the Legislature, kind of getting to know all these people.
This is a question that people ask me all the time. How's it going? How's it... Okay, so imagine a fire hose, right? And people say, "Oh, drink through the fire hose." So imagine a fire hose, and you're trying to drink through it with a straw, and it's just blasting you right in the face. It is, it could be a little insane, and you have to really have perspective as to triaging the moment, right? Triaging your meetings, triaging what's important for your district, but also triaging for yourself, right? You can't take 3,000 meetings in a day, although people would want you to. But it is fun, it is exciting, and I get a chance to be here.
Yeah, you can't take 3,000 meetings in a day, although I feel like in your first year, you kind of try, right? Because you just say yes to everything, and you want to get to know everyone, and I'll tell you...
Well, this is a relationship business, right?
100%, yeah. Well, and I'll tell you, it's kind of funny. I've been joking with people, because when I was, I'm starting my third year now, so my second term, and, you know, two years ago, when I was in your shoes, I was like drowning, like you're just describing. And then, like this year, nobody wants to meet with me. It's hilarious. And I'm like, "Wait, what? What did I do? Did something..." But no, it's just...
Because you met with them in the first round.
We met with everybody. So it's just been a way different start to the year session this time around, because it's like, wow, everyone kind of knows everyone, and now you're kind of just figuring out other stuff to do, like podcasting, you know?
Right, right. How do you fill in the gaps, right?
Exactly, right? Exactly. So it's been really cool. You know, I'm glad to hear it's going pretty well, but definitely like drinking out of a fire hose for sure. How about, like personally, what are some of your hobbies, your interests, you know?
Hobby? What is that word? But I'm not familiar with that terminology.
That's a good point. The life that you just described, I imagine, you know, honestly, I feel the same when people ask me that question. I'm like, "I have no idea."
I mean, there's some things that I would love to be able to do, right? That's important. I love to go hiking in the woods. I love to do that kind of stuff. I love to go to the beach. I love to spend time with my family. My kids are a little bit older, so it's a little challenging to wrangle everyone. But as far as hobbies, I would really love, and I'll debut this here, the secret to Jeff Gonzalez, no one knows this, woodworking.
Oh, really?
Actually, woodturning.
So it's a woodturning. So what's the difference, if I may, between woodturning and woodworking?
Piece of wood, and you put it on this thing, and it spins, and you get like this razor, and you can make all kinds of cool things.
That's cool.
When I was in the Marine Corps, and I was injured, I went to a place known as Wounded Warrior Battalion. That's where warriors, you know, we go and recover from our wounds. And one of the greatest things I've learned was woodturning, because it almost forced me to learn to slow down my breathing, because every breath means something on that piece of wood.
That's cool.
So it was a great thing.
So we'll call that an aspirational hobby. How about that?
There you go, aspirational hobby.
That sounds good. You know, we'll definitely mark that down, and next time we have you on, maybe you'll have done that. I don't know, we'll see.
There you go, and salsa dancing.
Oh, salsa. See, that's cool.
Salsa dancing. I'm an old-school salsa dancer. That's what my parents taught me, and...
Yeah. I bet your wife loves that, you know?
Your wife loves that?
No, your wife probably loves it.
My wife is not quite the dancer.
Okay, all right. See, my wife wishes I probably could salsa dance better.
She likes to watch me do that, yeah.
That's good. I've done a little salsa with my, you know, just...
Chips, salsa, I like it. Yeah, make it happen. Especially this weekend.
Oh, definitely.
During the football game, right?
Definitely this weekend. Well, hey, that's awesome. And, you know, it's great, obviously, hearing more about you and stuff, people getting to know you, but, you know, really been a pleasure working with you so far, and, you know, look forward to continue doing that. Yeah, but speaking of this weekend, I mean, yeah, let's talk about that, right? Chips and salsa.
The game was insane for many reasons.
Super Bowl.
The Super Bowl, the food, the commercials. I was a little disappointed with the Dunk Kings. I expected a little bit more from last year. Did you watch last year's?
Yeah.
Did you see this year's commercial?
I did. The one at the beginning, right? It was like the beginning of the game. I thought the funniest part of that one was when he, when he, like, "We should have paid for Damon," or Matt, or whatever, because Matt Damon wasn't in this year's, or whatever.
But he was in another commercial. So, you know, I was expecting a lot more from the Dunk Kings, but, you know, we'll see next year what they bring to the table.
Yeah, it was good.
That was a good one. The other ones, I'm a commercial fan during...
Okay, all right.
I think they're funny. I think it's great. It kind of breaks it up a little bit. But as far as the game, what stunned me the most was how quickly the Eagles took off.
Yeah.
I mean, they were on fire. They stayed on fire, and they were soaring the entire time.
Yeah, yeah. No, it was, you know, obviously it was a blowout, so some people would say, like, it wasn't a great game, but I was fine with it. You know, I leaned over, someone asked me right before kickoff, like, "So who are you rooting for, and what do you think's gonna happen?" And I'm like, "Well, I'm rooting for the Eagles, and I think they're gonna win by a lot." That's what I told them.
Really?
Yes. I did, because...
So you predicted this?
I did. I should have tweeted it, is what I should have done. I should have put it on record, "Eagles are gonna win by a lot." I didn't know how much. My parlay just did okay, but, you know, well, that's a different story. But, you know, I really did. And the reason I did is because, you know, this might be a hot take, I don't know, but the Kansas City Chiefs are the worst good football team that I've ever seen in my life. Like, they're the worst.
That's crazy talk right now.
They are not a good football team. I mean, if you wa... I watched them in...
But they made it twice to the big show. What are you talking about?
Three times, right?
Three times to the big show.
No, listen, they were, when they, they were a great football team last year, but they just, there was something different this year. There was something wrong.
But they won all those games to get there.
You watch them all season, but they won them all. If you look at the margin, it was crazy. They won them all by like less than a score, right?
Look, a W is a W, Josh. I don't know what you're watching, but that's just crazy talk.
Look, they have a great quarterback and a good defense, right?
So you were going for the Eagles?
I was going for the Eagles, but I really didn't think it was gonna be that close.
I was not going for the Eagles or the Chiefs. I was going for the Jets, America's team, as I like to say. J-E-T-S, Jets, Jets, Jets.
All right, there you go, man.
Yeah, they were there in spirit, in the green.
So, okay, so you're a Jets fan?
I am.
Okay, so Aaron Rodgers not coming back, it sounds like. That's what, I mean, this isn't sports talk, but I figure I don't talk to a lot of Jets fans, so I gotta ask you about Aaron Rodgers.
There aren't many of us, but the ones that are, we are true Jets fans. And let me tell you a little story how I became a Jets fan. I wasn't a football player, football watcher, fanatic, anything like that, and a friend of mine said, "Look, check this out. I know you don't watch football, but you need to learn to be a football fan." I said, "Okay, no problem." So we went to a local sports bar. It was a Jets bar. We went there, and inside one room was the Jets, the other side was the Giants. He's like, "This is how you become a fan." So I became a Jets fan.
I love it.
10 years later, he said, "Hey, do you want to go watch a game?" I was like, "Of course. Let's go watch a game." That same location. And, you know, I went there with my Jets jersey. He said, "What are you doing?" I said, "What are you talking about? I'm wearing my Jets jersey." He goes, "Why are you a Jets fan?" I said, "You're the one who introduced me to the Jets." He goes, "Bro, that was a joke. I didn't really think you'd do it." I was like, "I've been all in for the last 10 years."
That's hilarious.
So, there you go. That's my story.
And that's how you became a Jets fan?
That's how I became a Jets fan.
I hate to tell you, but you kind of picked one of the tougher teams. Like, it's that or Buffalo, right? Or maybe the Bears.
I mean, I could have been like a Browns fan or something.
Or a Browns fan, that's true. But man, the Jets have had it a little rough, you know?
Yeah. Well, you know, one day, one day we will come back.
That's what I say about the Sacramento Kings all the time. You know, one day it's gonna happen. And I tell my son, "You just gotta believe until you're 80."
That's right.
And hopefully it's happened by then.
One day, the great Sacramento Kings will rise to victory.
They will rise, man, they will rise.
They will rise.
So I was gonna do a clip of the week. We usually do a clip of the week, and I was gonna play a little clip from the game, but everyone saw the game. We know what happened. So, you know, quick, like, on-the-fly pivot here. Do you want me to play the Dunkin' commercial?
Do it.
And you can react. All right, let's do that. All right.
Welcome to Java Jam, Battle of the Coffee Brand Band.
This ain't the Dunkings. Where the hell are Matt and Tom?
Forget them suckers. Matt Damon and Tom Brady don't have the heart of a champion.
We got a new squad, Dunkin's sequel.
Affleck's and Belichick. Dunkin's!
A little more spirit on the, you know, on the charge next time, all right? We got a fourth Dunkin', too, coming.
Oh my God.
Hey, man.
Is that coffee? What are you doing in there?
I'm just trying to find the character.
We got a battle of barista buds.
I'm all in for Dunkin'.
You should have paid for Matt.
I told you that.
Dunkin's! I'd love to get roasted!
Like a dark seasonal roast with coriander and slight balsamic drizzle.
Sounds like what's in my garbage disposal.
See you, coach.
How much to wait a half hour to get my name spelled wrong on the cup?
Nobody wants a goat milk double half-caf soy milk cap. You could just brew it. It's beans and water.
Oh, damn.
Listen, Dunkin's for all of yous. America runs on Dunkin'.
Okay, man, wow. What an adventure.
There are two things that stood out to me. Number one, what was the coffee dip thing? I didn't quite get that. It was weird, but funny. What was that about?
Well, I don't even, did you, I couldn't even tell who was in there.
I have no idea.
So, but it was supposed to be their replacement for Damon.
Which obviously didn't work.
The actor replacement, but he was getting into character in this, like, coffee ground, like, which was, I was, honestly, it was pretty chaotic. That was a chaotic commercial. I will say, I enjoyed seeing Seal as a seal. That was kind of cool.
That was, that was funny, Seal as a seal.
But I don't know, the commercials were just okay this year for me. I don't have a ton. Usually I have a couple in my brain that were like really...
Belichick and his girlfriend were in that one.
In the Dunkin' one, that's true.
In the Dunkin' one, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, Blind Reaction, when I first saw it, I thought, huh, okay, what's up with the coffee? And get me a donut. Those are the two things that came to mind.
I do love Dunkin' for all those reasons.
Let me, let me, let me tell you something about Dunkin' Donuts. Maybe this is a little off track, but I think it's...
It'll be in the title. We're gonna put Dunkin' Donuts in the title.
I think it's important that you and your viewers understand this about Dunkin' Donuts. Do you know what a Boston cream donut is?
I have tried one, yeah.
Okay. The regular donut with a chocolate topping, and inside it have vanilla custard, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Look, if the Dunkin' is watching this right now, you're skimping on the vanilla custard. It needs to be filled, it needs to go across, like, like this. Once you take a bite, it needs to do this. And right now, it's only got one drop. They need to, they need to step it up.
You know, I think this is shrinkflation, though, honestly. I think, you know, all the costs, they just had, they were put a little less cream in there every year, and now it's down to like...
Well, it's hurting me. It's hurting me, and I don't appreciate it.
They're probably still charging you for the full...
Oh, yeah. Oh, absolutely. There's probably a 15% surcharge and a tariff on top of my donuts.
Well, hey, well, maybe we can do something about that, too. You got elected to change, change things. I mean, Boston cream donut, sounds like a... How great is the Boston accent, though? I will say, like, that's what I loved about that Dunkin' commercial, was the hat of a champion.
The hat of a champion.
And, you know, like, all that stuff, man.
We should have paid for Matt, yeah.
There was, I think it was a Super Bowl commercial a few years ago that I still kind of mess with my kids about, with John Krasinski, was it? And about the Hyundai self-park mode or whatever, where he's like...
I didn't see this one.
He's like, "You can pack it at the Haba?" And then like, they just, remember that? It had Smart Park, was the Smat Pack.
Smat Pack.
Yeah, that was a memorable commercial.
I do like that one.
All right, well, enough commercial talk, because we do have to talk business eventually, right? But, no, I, I don't know. We'll see. We'll see how next year's Super Bowl goes. Next year is gonna be hosted in Santa Clara.
That's right.
I'm just saying, right now, Niners gotta be there, have a home Super Bowl. It's gonna be great.
I'm gonna be selling peanuts.
Oh, you know, before we move on, though, Kendrick Lamar. I didn't ask you a halftime show. So what were your thoughts?
Disappointed.
Now, are you a Kendrick fan? Or are you just like...
I am a Kendrick fan. I like what he, I like what he did in the Grammys. I like how he talked about the city. I guess I was just, I wanted a little bit more. You know, as a West Coast guy, I wanted to see more of that West Coast flavor, and, you know...
Serena Williams, like, dancing wasn't enough for you?
I did protection for Serena Williams a couple times. Let me tell you something about Serena. Don't shake her hand. She will break you. She is a, not only is she a phenomenal athlete, she is strong. I shook her hand, and she brought me to my knees.
I believe it.
She brought me to my knees. Phenomenal athlete.
Oh, she's awesome. One of the best. Yeah, I hear you. I'm, my son's a big Kendrick fan. We actually weren't at the same gathering this year, but he said it was pretty good. And he's a big Kendrick fan, so I mean, that tells you something.
He wasn't like overly wild.
Yeah, he wishes the stage was a little bit, like, a little better, like, the set design was a little more, you know?
Well, he's got you in the Legislature. Maybe you could do something about that next year.
Yeah, that's definitely a priority. All right, so moving on, Stories of the Week. All right, we're gonna start with the big one, which, you know, the supermajority, we didn't, we obviously weren't voted no, but the supermajority approved a $50 million taxpayer package to essentially counter the new administration. $25 million for legal services for undocumented immigrants, and then another $25 million to hire a bunch of lawyers to sue the Trump administration. Obviously, not something where I think that our priority should necessarily be as a legislature. But interestingly, if you read Governor Newsom's signing statement, so when he announced this special session, he did like, I think, like, either a press conference or some, some big, like, social media thing where he made this big splash, and then the fires hit. And then, you know, he's been really trying to work with the Trump administration on that. And so, when he signed these bills, zero fanfare. I mean, zero fanfare. He literally signed them. He might have put out a press release, but did not, like, hardly say or do anything, right? And he included a signing statement with one of them that says, "The Legislature should follow up with another piece of legislation," I wonder where he got this idea, "to make sure that none of the dollars for these legal services can go to basically protecting violent criminals from being deported." Interestingly, exactly the amendment that the Republican Caucus proposed on Monday, last Monday, that was rejected by the supermajority. Newsom actually included that in his signing statement that he wants to see another bill to do that. And so, they could have saved some time and just voted for our amendment, but putting that aside, I thought it was fascinating. What were your thoughts on all that, and kind of your experience with just the whole, the whole kind of debate?
You know, when I first started seeing the conversations take place and hearing the conversations taking place, my initial thought was, okay, this is common sense. Let's do some prevention stuff. Let's do some recovery stuff. That makes sense to me. I look at $50 million, and then I think to myself, how many veterans are homeless on the street right now? Right? That's the kind of the first thing. What can we do to help our veterans on the street? But yet, we use a portion of this money for just-in-case fund? There are people that absolutely, right now, are dying on the street, and what are we doing about it? So priorities are off. That's, that was my first kind of like blind, emotional, what are we doing, guys? There are kids that need books, people that need homes, people that need food. Like, there's a lot of things that we could be doing differently, but that, that didn't take place. When he came back and said, "We need to do some follow-up legislation," I thought to myself, "Well, we could have done this already. We're wasting time, money, and effort."
Before we close the special session?
Before we close the special session. And then, you know, folks, we're trying to tell some of my colleagues that, well, this is not how it works, and this, we should probably do, almost in a demeaning tone, and I thought, "Guys, we're just seeing the gap. I'm trying to answer the gap. We're not trying to go against you. We're trying to work together collaboratively." But unfortunately, what we end up seeing is, we know better, we know better, and then it, it makes them look bad.
Yeah. Yeah, it was really unfortunate. I mean, yeah, I just think, obviously, I would love to see more collaboration in the Capitol, but, you know, this is kind of how things go a lot of the time, sadly, but, but I agree. I think it was a missed opportunity. It was also a missed opportunity to do more on the fires, you know, and really just, we did pass the recovery dollars, which is important, but that's, you know, just a piece of the puzzle, right?
Sure. California fires are a cancer, if you will, that's, that takes place throughout the, every single year. It flares back up, so on, so forth. And we spend so much money on, on fighting the recovery side, the rebuilding side, that if we were to spend the same amount of effort on the prevention side, it would logically lower the amount of money that we spend on recovery. So why not do that? Why not focus on that? It's a lot like when I was in combat. I would get commanders that would tell me, "Well, why do we need to do this? No one's attacking us. Why do we need to do these things? No one's, we don't have a problem." And I would go back and say, "They don't attack us, and we don't have a problem because of our preventative measures that were taking place."
Right, right.
If we remove the preventative measures, then we'll see more attacks.
Yep.
So it's almost like disproving the negative, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And that's where we need to, we as leaders in California need to get into a space of, how do we prevent these things? You know, we talk about criminal justice reform. How do we prevent that? Education, right? We get them at the third grade level. How do we, how do we mitigate the fires and the recovery and all this stuff? We need to get back to prevention. All these things are very clear to me, and I believe in your eyes as well, but unfortunately, what ends up happening is it becomes this line, "No, no, no, we don't want you to come up with that good idea," and that's a shame.
Yeah. Well, we can, why don't we just stay on the topic of the fires, since we're already there? You know, I know the Palisades Fire, they're narrowing in on the cause of it. You know, I think one of the leading theories is, you know, it was caused by basically a fire they thought they had put out, and then might just have smoldered a little bit and come back. And so, you know, I'm sure that we're gonna learn more about that in the funding days, but, or the coming days. But, you know, there's, there's also kind of this, there was this story in Politico about all these different communities across California now talking about potentially passing new tax increases in order to fund some of these fire priorities that you're talking about. You know, to me, that's an interesting one. I feel like there's always, like, especially local governments tend to always use tragedies or problems like this to, like, pass new revenues. And what I would almost rather see is, like, the states step up in a bigger way, and to your point earlier about priorities, like prioritize fire prevention over some of the other things that we spend money on. We just spent $50 million, right, on this, this special session fund. I mean, there's so many other things like that that we could really dive into and probably find the money for, but it really just comes down to priorities. So what are your thoughts on, like, the, like, the tax increases for, for fire prevention or for firefighting?
You know, I'm a fan of less government spending, lean out, you know, the Lean Six Sigma, right? A methodology to lean out in business. So I'm a fan of coupons. We don't need to spend all this money on this stuff when we can, we can lower our expenses. So, in the tax conversation, are we at that point, or is that a reactive measure?
Right.
So I look at it and say, where can we cut? Left, right, center, all these different pieces? And are we at that point? And if we are, then we have to take a hard look and have that conversation. But if we're not, then we need to go back to the drawing board and look at all the ways in which we can lean out our expenses.
Well, and I think so much of it, too, you gotta get these approved by voters, right?
Right.
And I think the taxpayers just have so little trust because of what they've seen in how money is managed, and how it's spent, and how you spend billions on homelessness, and you have more homelessness, and things like that. I mean, you look at, another good example this week was LA hired this recovery czar, this fire recovery czar, and we're gonna pay him half a million dollars to do this job. It, they got so much public backlash, I don't know if you saw the story, but it got so much public backlash that the mayor called him, and he basically said, "Can you just do this for free?" And he agreed to do it for free. But, I mean, if it hadn't have, you know, gotten that backlash, I mean, it's just, I think people see stuff like that, and they go, "You're not using the money I'm already giving you wisely. Why would I approve another tax increase?" Right?
More importantly, why do we need to hire a recovery czar? Do we not have that already in the system? Do we not have folks that do this on an Office of Emergency Management? What, what are we doing here? Why do we need to bring someone else to do this? Is this the first time California's had a fire?
Yeah.
This is not a new scenario, and to be spending money like that is reckless.
Yeah, for sure. Well, and it's funny, I'm not gonna dive too much into this, but it kind of aligns with what we're seeing with the whole Department of Government Efficiency at the national level. You know, there's all these, like, opinions on it, obviously, and everyone's got a different take on it. But the reality is that if you look at, like, this is the third, I think, time this has been done at the federal level. The last time was with the Clinton administration, right? So in the past, it's actually been a bipartisan sort of effort to... sort of effort to say, "Hey, we need to dive into every single dollar and we need to see what is being spent wisely and what's not." And I think people are ready for that and people want that, right? And maybe we need some of that in California. So.
You know, Josh, one of the, as, as I look at that national perspective that they're taking, I'd love to see that here in California. And the reason for that is we need to rebuild the trust with, with, with the public. The way you rebuild trust is, is through bringing clarity in the conversation.
Yeah.
Transparency in the books. So if we can show transparency, that's one way in which we can start building back the public trust. When we have money that goes missing for whatever initiative, people don't want to, they, they, they're not going to trust.
Yep.
And I believe we need to have that. And, and, and by the way, I did hear the governor say that there is a, a Department of Government Efficiency here in, in the, in the state. And I thought to myself, how is that possible when we keep on, uh, our, our budget keeps on, uh, looking upside down?
Well, he also said that while he vetoed, you know, a lot of good bills last year on, on, you know, actually doing that work, right?
Right.
Increasing that transparency, improving how we track spending. And we, you know, we approved this system called FISCAL to better track our spending. I, I'm going to get the number wrong, but it's been years and years and years. It's never, never come online.
Right.
Um, I mean, there are a lot of things that we, you know, said we were going to do, we just haven't done.
Well, it, it's time for the, for the public outcry to be louder. Both Democrat, Independent, uh, and Republican.
Yeah.
All folks throughout the community, those who are listening, you need to demand transparency from, from your elected leaders. You need to demand it. And if you don't, then you're gonna get what you get.
A hundred percent. On, on the fires, last two notes, I would say are last two stories, and I'll just do them quickly to maybe get your reaction. Bipartisan bill introduced in the Senate to fund Cal Fire Year Round, which again is a pretty substantial cost, but it might be necessary. I mean, when we see, you know, um, these fires happening at the times of the year that they're happening, we start to question like, do we even have a fire season anymore? Or is this actually something that can happen at any time? And then the other thing is I, I, I kind of got a kick that, that Governor Newsom and Elon Musk were both going after the Coastal Commission in California. There's some bipartisan anger over that for sure. And, um, some of the, uh, the rules in place that are actually going to help obstruct people from rebuilding their homes, make it prohibitively expensive for people to actually rebuild in some of these devastating areas or these areas that have been devastated by the fires. And so, uh, you know, on both those fronts, um, you know, I think some work needs to be done for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the fact that we have bipartisan conversations taking place in California is a win. It's a win in itself.
Yep.
Going after the Coastal Commission is another win. You know, we, we've created these sort of empires throughout California and now they're running roughshod across everybody and, and we need to pull them back.
Yeah.
When it becomes nearly impossible to build a home in California because of something that government created, then we have a problem. There's no way we're going to get to the point of building all these homes that, that are needed throughout California if in fact we keep on building more walls.
Yeah.
To prevent the building of more homes in California. So this logical movement that's taking place, or of, of these organizations is hurting California. Bipartisan conversations are always great because you get to have both sides of the conversation. And, and that's what I'm, I'm happy about.
Yeah.
The fact that Elon Musk is, is doing that with, 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 uh, with the governor is also very good.
Yeah, no, it, it was cool to see. And, and I, I do hope, and even, you know, some of the, I won't name names, but some of the more progressive members of the legislature are starting to say, "Yeah, we, we probably need to look at the Coastal Commission." And, and that's huge because I will say the last, well, I've only been here, you know, this is my third year, but even in the last two years, they've been, they've been pretty successful in beating back any attempts to change the status quo. And, um, you know, I think, I think this may be the wake-up call that gets, gets those changes done.
Let's hope so.
You mentioned something earlier too about priorities, about books for kids and making sure, you know, education, things like that. I don't know if you saw the latest, uh, the latest national score. So the nation's report card came out from, um, I always try to like, I always mess up the name, but the National Assessment for Educational Progress. Not good. Not good results for California, for California students. Obviously there are some challenging results across the country as well, but you know, I'm just, we spent, we've, we spent so much more today than we did even 10 years ago on education in the state. The answer always is said, like, "We need more funding. We need more funding. We need more funding." But the reality is, is that that number has gone up consistently, um, and our, our scores continue to go down. So in the latest scores, just, this is from Ed Source, uh, they show mostly no progress. Scores in fourth and eighth grade reading fell again, leaving California nine points, uh, and the nation eight points below 2017. Math was mixed. Uh, it was up in fourth grade, but not enough to catch 2019. So it's still below that. And then eighth grade, uh, math dropped again as well. Um, I mean, these are, you know, the, the other big part of this is we have growing disparities between our low-income students, our, you know, our achievement gap. And, um, it's, it's just really tough. And I, you know, being the new vice chair of the Education Committee, something that I think we need to start really taking more seriously as a state and doing things differently. Because the reality is, is that what we have been doing for the last decade or more is not working. Our, our students are not improving. And then on top of that, we added the nation's longest school closures during COVID. We, you know, we, we really added fuel to the fire with that too. But we have to do something different in California.
Show me your money and I'll show you your priorities, right? And it's obvious that we are not spending enough time on the education side. You want to invest in California's future, education. You want to invest in California's, uh, criminal justice system, education. You want to invest in California communities, education. It all goes back to the same root. Right back to the same place. And if we are not, not putting in the right resources for our amazing teachers throughout all of California to help our wonderful students, then we are failing them. And right now, our report card, we are failing. So as, as leadership of, of this state, we need to come together, put the Republican and the Democrat stuff to the side. These kids are hurting and it's because of failed leadership. So it's our opportunity in this year and the years to come to make a difference in, in the future of California. And the only way we can do that is by, by prioritizing our kids. That's where it starts.
Yeah. And, and I think that's the key, right? Is the kids have to be the priority. And, you know, in so many ways, um, you know, the, the parents, the families, the kids, the students, right? They need options, right? They need options in education. I think it's amazing, uh, even within my own family, and I always tell people this, like, my kids in the next few years are probably going to be at like three different schools. Some will be at a charter school. Some will be at a traditional public school. Like, you know, I don't have any money for private schools. That's not on the table. But the reality is, is that students and families need options, right, in their education. And, and I think the utmost flexibility possible to pick the school that fits best with that particular kid. I mean, I've got three kids in my house and they all have vastly different, you know, uh, strengths and weaknesses and all of that, right? And so, um, I just, I want families to be able to do that. And I think, there's some policy changes we can make in California to make that even more prevalent. So.
Yeah, agreed.
So, uh, moving on, uh, Dan Walters had a, had a fun piece that I wanted to bring up to you this week on high-speed rail. So, uh, not sure how, if you have a lot of opinions on high-speed rail, but I just loved this, uh, this, this title. So Dan Walters wrote this piece and he called it, "Trump Targets California's Troubled Bullet Train Project. It May Deserve a Mercy Killing." Which I just thought was kind of funny. Um, but essentially, you know, the piece really, and we'll put it in the show notes, but the piece talks a lot about, you know, the, the project's own inspector general coming out recently and, um, with this sharply worded report that basically said they're not going to hit their deadline for 2033 that is supposed to, that's when the, the service between Merced and Bakersfield is supposed to begin. By the way, I walked through the, the California State Fair here in Sacramento. They had a big display of this and that's what they were telling everyone, 2033, 2033, right? Okay, we'll see if that happens. Now they're saying that's not going to happen. They don't have, there's no new date here, but they're going to miss that deadline. Uh, and obviously you have an administration coming in that's not going to keep the gravy train rolling, right? It's not going to keep sending federal dollars. So there's really no way to keep funding this project. Do you think it deserves a mercy killing? Is it time for, you know, California to move on? And, 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 you know, what are your general thoughts on it?
I believe that it should not be a publicly funded anything.
Yeah.
Right? Private industry wants to come in, Elon Musk or whomever, John Doe from the, from the, from the train yard. I don't care. You want to do this and you have private dollars to make this happen? Go ahead, make it happen. But we have other priorities that we need to look at in California and this deserves a mercy kill.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. Uh, I couldn't agree more. I mean, I, you know, and it is funny because we were talking about this in our caucus meeting recently and it's like, well, there's a lot of jobs in this project. True. But guess what else has a lot of jobs? So many other infrastructure projects. Like, let's take that and let's go build water infrastructure. We're currently send, spending a billion dollars per year out of our greenhouse reduction fund in California and sending it to high-speed rail. What a tremendous waste when we could send that to any other priority, right?
Right.
And so I think that's where I'm at with it is like, no, let's keep building infrastructure, just not this infrastructure, right?
Exactly.
You know, voters want water storage, uh, you know.
Priorities.
Farmers want water storage. LA wants water storage. Like, let's build the water storage, right? Let's, let's, let's put the investments there and the jobs there instead of into something that, let's be honest, I mean, very few people will probably ever want to use.
Exactly.
So, uh, well, good.
And at the price tag, who, who'll be able to afford it?
Well, right, yeah.
Right?
Exactly. So, uh, projects, we just killed it. We just did it right there. We just accomplished it.
We blew it up. You need a blow up button.
Couple more stories here. Uh, you know, there was this big story I actually was a part of on, um, a bill that I'm doing with, uh, Assembly Member Joaquin Arambula, bipartisan bill to really open the conversation again on nuclear energy in California, uh, really, you know, with all of this artificial intelligence and data centers and all of this stuff going on. And, you know, I don't know, maybe the state wanting to go all electric in the next, you know, 10 years, which I have issues with, but if that is the goal, we have a lot of work to do on the grid. We're going to need new sources of clean, reliable power. I think nuclear is a big part of that, but, um, yeah, I didn't know if you had any thoughts specifically on that policy area. I probably should have asked you beforehand.
Yeah, I'm a buffet guy, right? Uh, what's, what's best and most responsible for, for our region? And I'm not a fan of only electric. I'm a fan of whatever, whatever is best and responsible for, for our region. There's no way we can do that by the timeframe that, that they're talking about, but what's important is that we look at all the alternative forms of energy and what is the best thing that we can do because we have that. In my area, we have Lithium Valley.
Yep.
A huge source of lithium, but that's going to drive a ton of industry. So that's one way, geothermal, so on, so forth.
Yeah.
I, I believe whatever we have here, we use it responsibly and we, we end the foreign dependence on it.
Yep.
And if it's, i- i- if it's geo, if it's, uh, electric or if it's nuclear, then let's have those conversations, but we shouldn't be cutting everything off just to put all of our eggs in one basket and that will hurt California.
I agree. I think we need to really embrace an abundance agenda, right? Let's put all of the cards on the table, all of our options on the table and, um, you know, I'm excited about the clean energy future, but it's not here yet.
Right.
And the reality is, is that that is going to be a long transition. And we have to be able to make that transition without breaking the banks of our constituents, without making it hard, life harder for, you know, everyday Californians, right? And I think that really should be the goal and the message is we want energy in abundance. We want energy that's affordable. And we want energy that's reliable, right? So how can we do that? We, you do that by, uh, you know, taking advantage of all the wonderful resources that you have. And so, uh, couldn't agree more. Couple more things here, um, before we let you go. Uh, I don't know if you saw this Newsom executive order on water, where he said, uh, "We need to store more water." I don't know. I don't know if you saw that one.
Good, good.
It was a good one, right?
Good idea.
Slow clap.
Let's, let's, let's do that.
So yeah, so Newsom ordered state officials to capture and store more stormwater in San Joaquin Valley reservoirs for farmers and towns and to remove or minimize any obstacles that stand in their way. Now, this is a little more complicated than I'm presenting it, obviously, because, you know, you, there's, you know, there's obviously a, a lot of different rules and, and limitations that go on here. But the reality is, is that it was kind of funny when I saw that, right? Because at the end of the day, it's, yes, a hundred percent. And you know, the best way to do that is you build water infrastructure, right? So.
It, it's common sense and thank you for, for coming to the, to the table, uh, with, with the sandwich.
Yeah, exactly. Um, uh, another one here, um, I don't know if, this wasn't in your district, but, uh, the protesters have shut down the LA freeway. I don't know if you saw that.
Yeah, I, I saw that. It was, it was in LA, wasn't in, in my district.
Yeah, it wasn't in your district.
Yeah. We, we had a couple, uh, protesters throughout the weekend, but nothing, uh, significant like it was in, in Los Angeles.
I just don't think that's how you get people on your side. You know what I mean? I, I don't think that's a winning strategy.
Right. Blocking traffic just gets people angry, especially in LA traffic. You, you want to protest, by all means protest. You know, I fought for this nation for, for freedom of speech and for people's ability to, to speak out. But doing that in such a way that it, it infringes upon someone else's freedom is, goes against what I believe in.
Yeah. Last story here, uh, again, uh, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with the group California Environmental Voters, but they released their scorecard. And I just thought this, um, they're, they're, I guess Newsom only got a B, like minus or something? And I thought, man, how, how do you get an A? You know, because I mean, I, you know, I won't even say my score, but I wasn't anywhere close. I was an F, right? But I was an F because when you look at these bills and, and I'll pull it up here. But when you look at these bills, so many of them are just going to increase costs for consumers, you know, at, at the, you know, I think everyone loves the environment. Everyone cares about the environment. I would say that you and I both care deeply about the environment, but everything's a balance. And you can't, uh, you know, make things prohibitively expensive for consumers at, you know, in, in order to achieve an environmental goal that is, is unachievable otherwise.
Right.
And so, um, I think it's, uh, yeah, it's going to be, it's, that's going to, you're going to find that an interesting thing to navigate during your time.
You know, one of the things that I, that I've come to the realization is that in this balance that we try to strike is first and foremost is understanding what your constituents in, in your district
Yeah.
want and want of you, right? And if someone wants to rate me an F, but I'm an A with my constituents.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Uh, I want to do, I'm their voice.
Yeah.
Right? And I'm their representative.
Totally.
Not the representative of, of, of these folks. And it's such, and you, you said something that I always try to talk about is balance. And in that, we have to have that balance where people need to live on this earth and, but we don't want to pollute the earth. So what is that balance that we can, we can strike?
Totally. Uh, I think it's important and, you know, it's, it's, I want, I mean, just me, myself, right? Living it every day. You, you did this too, right? Raising a family, paying for your kids' groceries, their school lunches, or, you know, maybe, maybe that's a bad example, but, you know, the gas for your car. I mean, all of these things, um, you know, are, this is what we hear about the most is it's all too expensive. Our energy, our monthly energy costs, right? And, you know, as much as I love the environment, I think it's really critical that we make sure things remain affordable. And, um, unfortunately, a lot of these policy proposals, particularly in California, which is a place where, because we've, we've checked a lot of environmental boxes. We've made a lot of progress on the environment in California. And so now it's funny because you'll see like the policy areas that we get to are like pretty out there at this point, right?
Yeah.
The stuff we haven't done yet is pretty out there at this point, right? And so now we're just starting to get real creative and, but, but that can really, uh, put a lot of, um, burdens on consumers. And so, um, yeah, excited for the, excited for the new session, excited to be, uh, to get to know you a little better today and, uh, look forward to, to keeping, keeping it going. Any final thoughts, uh, before I let you go?
Thank you so much. I appreciate being on here and engaging conversation. Love to come back if, if I didn't completely mess this up.
Oh, you'll be back. You'll be back.
Next time, coffee, double stuffed Oreos. That's how I roll.
Maybe some Boston cream donuts.
Bastin cream donuts. We can pack the car and make it happen. Thank you so much, Josh.
Absolutely. Uh, we're going to have Assembly Member Greg Wallace on the episode next week. For anyone that wants to share any ideas, you can email us at pointoforderpod@gmail.com. Obviously you can listen on Spotify or Apple Podcasts and subscribe on socials, uh, YouTube, X, Instagram threads, Facebook, at Point of Order Pod. And you can follow today's host on X, myself, at Joshua underscore Hoover. And then Jeff Gonzalez, I believe is at ASM. And then Jeff Gonzalez, I believe, is at ASMJeffGonzalez is his X handle as well. Jeff, it was great having you and I look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you, sir.